Want to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Motley?
Mr. Motley?
I have you on the list today.
Okay. Father, we worship you with our presence here and with our service to you. I just ask for your presence here. I just pray from the Holy Spirit and be unmissed. Pray you'd heal Bourbon County. I pray you mend relationships. I pray you help us to make decisions that are honoring to our community and to each other. And pray, Father, I pray for your blessing on each commissioner. I thank you for their service. I ask you to touch that and bless that. And bless the future of Bourbon County too, the decisions we'll make going forward. You just covet your presence and we honor you tonight in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
All right. Approval of the agenda. And I would like to remove the SCK Mental Health budget talk tonight. And we can put it back on for next week. Same with the juvenile detention budget. So we have time to actually look over those budgets and what we're spending. And I would like to add a medical equipment donation agreement between us and the Mapleton Community Medical Clinic.
Okay. I would like to add to that on Southeast Kansas Mental Health. I was contacted by Allen County Commissioner David Lee and that they are setting a meeting of representative from each county commission. Time to be announced, but to discuss some of the issues that are concerning Southeast Kansas Mental Health.
Are you gonna go to that meeting?
If you don't have a problem with it, I would.
Okay. No, I'm fine with that. And we will put it back on the agenda after
After that meeting.
The multi-county meeting. Sounds good to me.
And I do believe there is a couple of women here tonight that are from the board of directors.
We will give them plenty of time to speak.
Okay. Thank you. And then what did you say on the, we got that agreement?
We've got an agreement that we can, that we can talk about tonight for the medical.
And I was gonna ask, and okay, and then I was also gonna ask the table, the juvenile detention thing too, so.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. We're on the same page.
I second those changes to the agenda, consent agenda.
Yes.
Dear Bauer.
Yes.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from 3:31:25.
I motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting of 3:31:25.
And I will second it.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Proclamation for National Health Week. I have it here in front of me. Do you guys want to listen to my voice while I read the whole thing? Okay. All right. Bourbon County proclamation for National Public Health Week. Whereas National Public Health Week celebrates its 30th anniversary in 2025, recognizing 30 years of significant strides to improve the health and health equity of people of the United States. And whereas vaccination is one of the most significant public health achievements in history and has resulted in substantial decreases in the number of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths associated with vaccine-preventable diseases. Excuse me. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare, prepare for, mitigate, and recover from the impact of public health emergencies and a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks, natural disasters, and other disasters. And whereas a person's health status can differ drastically by zip code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community, context, access to healthy food, access to education, and access to healthcare. Whereas efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. Now, therefore, I, I didn't know I had my name in it. I, Brandon Whizen Hunt, Bourbon County Commissioner, Chairman, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Bourbon County, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Bourbon County, Kansas. I call upon the people of Bourbon County to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to recognize the contribution of public health in improving the health of the people of our state as the theme states. It starts here. And witness whereof I have heron to set my hand the 7th day of April, 2025. There you go.
Very well.
Bauer?
Yes.
Weizen Hunt?
Yes. All right. Consent agenda. Approval of 4:425 accounts payable totaling $282,877.38. Approval of 4:425 payroll totaling $292,222.96 and the tax roll corrections.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Okay, I'll second it.
Bauer?
Yes.
Yes. Hay bid openings? Okay. This is for the... Okay. I've never done these before. Just say who it is and...
Yes, so for the location, we actually only received, we only received three hay bids. So normally you would separate them by location, but announce the location and the bid. You'll decide if you want to accept it.
Okay, so this one is for 255th Radio Tower property. $30. This one is for the Elm Creek Hay Bid East Side. $1,000. And this is for Elm Creek Hay Bid West Side. $2,050. And they was all sent in by the same gentleman.
Okay. What do we... Do we know how many acres the 255th and Radio Tower property is? How many acres any of these are?
No, I would say the... I don't even know if it was in the bid, was it? It was just a physical description of the property.
I would say, I would say since it's the only bid, then... And it was in the paper and...
Yes, here is proof of publication. State of Kansas, Bourbon County. So, I'm gonna make a motion to accept it or...
I'll second that motion. I have no discussions. There are only three bids, so.
Yeah, well, and there really is just one bid because it was all the same guy sending all the real. Yeah. So. All right. So I guess you need this back.
Yes, and if you'll announce who the winner of those bids were.
They was, then I'm gonna mess up his name. Joe.
Terry.
Terry. And he sent us, he was the only one that sent them in, so.
Okay, before you move on from the hay bids, there is the old landfill property on Native Road. We did not receive a bid for that. Would you like to resubmit the bid in the newspaper to see if anybody submits a bid?
They went out at the same time as these did and didn't invite nobody?
At the same time, right?
I would say.
We can, yeah, I don't know. I mean, here's the original bid publication. So I... No, I guess we'll just have to mow it down. Okay.
Okay, so I have Beer Bauer?
Yes.
And Weizen Hunt?
Yes. Old business? Fence viewing discussion?
I'm still working on that. I haven't done anything, so.
Okay.
Unless anybody has some input.
Let me know when you need me to delegate somebody to go in my place.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. The tax sale, redaction and correction of the motion made on 3:31:25. I guess in my motion, I accidentally said that we was gonna hire that that tax law firm to do sales or tax sales for this, for the land bank, and that's not true. We're gonna hire them to do the tax sales for the county. And so I make a motion that we hire them to do tax sales for the county.
I'll second that motion.
Weizen Hunt?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Public comments for items not on the agenda.
We just had one. Mary Pimpherton for Rhodes.
Okay. Mary? Doesn't matter which one you sent in. Sit down and grab a mic. That one is on, isn't it?
Show's red.
Okay.
Okay, I know there's a roadwork session after this meeting, so I wanted to put in a request for pavement on the approximately half-mile section of Maple Road that runs from 3 Highway to 75th Street. That is a main road through Union Town. The buses travel it multiple times a day, and it's in extremely poor condition for the past more years than I can count on my fingers and toes. The city has been patching holes, but it's beyond what the city can patch.
3 Highway to 7... Which road is that in Union Town?
Maple Road. It's the old highway.
Okay, yeah, the old highway. You're saying from 75th to 3 Highway?
Yes.
Okay.
So if that could be taken into consideration, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No other public comments? Okay. New business? I guess we're to Commissioner comments.
Yeah. I have a couple things.
Go for it.
Okay, first, I don't know who we, who we need to. I got a email from Chamber requesting numbers of employees for...
Yeah, I got that email today too. I would, I would guess we would run that by the clerk and see if she can get us those numbers.
All right. And then I have a statement I would like to read. Okay, so on April, let's see, "Good evening." "I would like to take a few minutes to speak about zoning. I would like to clarify several statements I made last week in last week's announcements to panel and advisory board in reference to Bourbon County's enacting zoning regulations. Stating it is not a matter of if we zone, but how we zone. I have read the postings and comments on Facebook, received phone calls, phone messages and texts. Don't start jumping, John. There was only four of them. I am a proponent of social media and see it as a platform for practicing our First Amendment rights. I encourage people to voice their opinions, whether they are for, against, or on the fence about a subject. Communicating is a chief component to a compromise. No community of friends, family, friends, and neighbors will survive without compromise. Based on a few posts and comments that I, that comments you would believe that zoning is a bad taboo. The reality is that the wrong people are using the negative stigma about zoning to further their personal agendas. Last week was, to say the least, very frustrating. I take the blame as I bumbled and stuttered my way through announcing our intent to enact zoning regulations on industrial development. The discussion of this agenda item turned into a free-for-all with too many people talking at once, me included. At times, at times this is a struggle as I become impatient and too eager to reply. Maybe the classroom rule of raising one's hand is needed. I welcome the public's input on agenda items, but they should come at the end of the commissioners discussing them. I didn't allow that to happen before I was finished presenting it. When people talk, listen completely. People, most people never listen. That's Ernest Hemingway. Are we listening to what is being said, or are we just hearing what we believe we already know? I did say three times, it was not a matter of if we were going towards zoning, rather what will zoning look like? Let me explain how I came to this belief that we are moving towards zoning. The issue of zoning is a touchy subject, but in response to one of the Facebook comments, it's not just about solar. Solar became, because of our present circumstances, is at the top of the list as why this county needs, needs to be zoned. All three commissioners, Kruger, Weizen Hunt, and, and I, sworn in on January 13th, made zoning a part of our campaigns. Commissioner Kruger, prior to his resignation, took the lead on researching zoning regulations for the county to adopt. Chair, Chairman Weizen Hunt, while serving in the previous commission, had asked Shane Walker to be, to begin constructing a preliminary map establishing all non-incorporated areas as agricultural, requiring any other industry to receive Board of Commissioner approval. This included discussion from both former commissioners Clifton Beth and Jim Harris, who recently reached out to me because they thought I had said the county staff had assigned, had been assigned by the previous commission. They were not listening, or rather they're gossipers who told them or was not listening. Nothing has changed with Beth, who just wanted to argue. Ironically, it was the actions, rather inactions of these two former commissioners that we are even having this discussion. After learning of the first set of solar agreements signed November 13, 2023, without prior knowledge of the stakeholders, without any public notice of this industry's intention to establish in Bourbon County, no public hearings, nothing, total lack of transparency until the agreements were signed. This on the notion that because of the county not being zoned, that landowners have total dominion over their property, ignoring the fundamental rights guaranteed in the Declaration of Independence and the U.S. Constitution and as affirmed by the United States Supreme Court, that sole dominion of one's property comes with the responsibility, not to interfere with their neighbor's rights, to include not putting them at risk. This stance of no recourse was repeated to non-participating neighbors who came to those commissioners for help after learning that these huge solar sites, panels numbering in hundreds of thousands would be coming to a field near them. Only to hear from this board that only if citizens had been for zoning, referring to a group that opposed the wind turbines three years prior, doubling down stating that they had no authority because we are not zoned. Some of these sites would be near the neighboring houses, maybe even as close as 25 feet. Fun fact, I have not, I have heard of no participating landowner having panels close to their own homes. That's point one of why I said it's not a matter of if zoning is being implemented. Point two, the former commission, who in their attempt to appease this growing group of neighbors and a changing public opinion requiring them to take action, point two is about, was about a temporary moratorium in the paneling of an advisory board. A zoning recommendation, recommendation by this committee was ignored, although the recommendations was never really conveyed by the committee leader. The committee members that were committed to finding solutions had recommended zoning as a tool needed to regulate industries wanting to establish in Bourbon County. Point three, also from the previous commission, and this should clarify questions that I had received as to why voters are not deciding the zoning issue. From the first neighbor addressing this previous board, the issue of zoning was used as a stall tactic. Gathering a petition was a wild goose chase, telling them it could be placed on the ballot this last election for voters to decide on zoning, only to learn that zoning is not a ballot measure, but a commission action. It makes me wonder their intentions all along. Were they just in support of a few landowners? Funny how now I'm hearing how this new commission is enacting zoning to support just a few disgruntled neighbors, disgruntled neighbors. We need to do what is right, and that we need to do what is right for the whole county. Ironically, this, this commission supports all stakeholders in this situation. The move to zoning, the pending litigation, neither is designed to stop this solar, these solar projects. What I have read on social media, viewed in the past meetings, and had one-on-one discussions is that most people believe the negative stigma about zoning. Landowners, farmers, and ranchers, especially generational families, are very passionate about their land. Protecting their land has been ingrained over decades from one generation to the next. Our mistrust in government is equally ingrained. This speech is a case study of how just a couple of members of government can divide a whole community. The purpose of the government, of government legislation is to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of the people. Although this basic principle that is lost in today's political arena, I choose not to abandon it. Zoning is the practice of local governments to regulate land use through ordinance for the preservation and economic growth while aiming to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Zoning laws are tools used to control land development, minimizing risk hazards, and reducing adverse effects to preservation and conservation of the land. Zoning is widely accepted and is firmly rooted in U.S. jurisprudence. Zoning is the United, zoning in the United States dates back to the late 1800s, but became widely used in the early part of the 20th century. Kansas adopted the Standard Zoning Enabling Act in 1924. This allowed for local governments to create and enforce their own zoning ordinances, regulating land use within their jurisdictions. Oddly interestingly is that the concept of zoning follows the period in American history referred to as the Second Industrial Revolution, which saw widespread urbanization to large cities like Los Angeles and New York, causing overcrowding, poor living and working conditions, pollution, and other health and safety concerns. Those that hold onto the outdated ideology that zoning somehow robs their freedom and right to whatever, to do whatever on their land are short-sighted. The Homestead Act of 1862, which allowed homesteaders to purchase land from the Louisiana Purchase, including Kansas, had stipulations including the requirements to live, to live on and cultivate the land for five years, build a home, and make improvements before gaining full ownership. This was just the nuts and bolts of what the government was telling these future landowners to do. Just like the industrial revolution of the early 1900s saw urbanization in America drawn away from rural communities to bigger cities, today's industrial development looks to invade rural areas, not for manpower, but for the land. Let me reiterate, it is not a matter of if we will zone. It is a matter of what zoning will look like. I believe zoning is a tool needed to, to help Bourbon County's economic growth. Thank you for listening this evening. I hope this gives a little more insight on this, on the issue of zoning in Bourbon County. I invite you to submit letters of interest to be on the zoning advisory panel. Also, I encourage you to participate in an upcoming public hearing to further discuss this issue of zoning. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
You reminded me I was supposed to ask for something on the agenda, or actually change something that was... I don't think we've gotten very many letters to be on that board. So.
14th. Have till the 14th.
Yeah, so a week? Right?
Yeah, another week.
Have till the 14th.
Right. Well.
I'm optimistic.
Me too.
We're only allowed one per district, right?
Yeah, and I, you know, I kind of said that as a guideline, but I would think that, you know, if we don't get one per district, we just panel what we, what we can. Because I think it's vital. You know, otherwise the decision falls at this table.
So the way I understand it, this panel is gonna be for gathering information
to discuss how what, you know, as to what type of zoning we're looking at in Bourbon County.
Okay.
I mean, we already got like the plan that you, that you instructed Shane and his staff to do. And I know we got a plan, you know, copies of Allen County's that our county councilor was...
We've got, we've got copies. We've got...
So I think we got, we got some material, but I think...
We've pretty much got all of Southeast Kansas's plans.
Yeah, but I think having a panel of citizens kind of gives us some insight, you know, further insight.
Okay.
Is it true all the counties around us are zoned?
No.
There's a few not.
Who is not?
Cherokee.
Cherokee.
Oh, he's, I'm talking about contiguous. Crawford, Lynn, and...
Yes, and Crawford has zoning. Allen has minimal zoning, and Lynn County has zoning. I mean, they have zoning, and you can't do anything in Lynn County without going to get a building permit and have it inspected. Same with Crawford County.
In fact, I would make a comment on Crawford County. Crawford County is not entirely zoned yet.
That is correct. They do have parts in Crawford County, yes. Yes, they do have, they do have parts of Crawford County that does not have zoning. But where they do have zoning, it's pretty strict. I mean, they're, I think, they're, they're, I mean... So on how Crawford County come up with their zoning plan is kind of odd because they do have parts that don't have any... Okay. So I guess Southeast Kansas Mental Health is here to talk to us. Would you like to do that?
Sure.
Sure, if you want to. Here you guys go.
Coming up, Marty? Several years ago, Joanne Thomas mentioned that Mercy's mistake in this community was not hiring, he was, she was referring to Chris Van Wer and a few of his classmates. Local folks trained to be doctors that moved down to Baxter Springs and set up a clinic. You know, when I was sitting in David's chair, our community was faced with the, let's just say, a lot of change in the way healthcare is delivered. We, Mercy announced their closing. I think CHC... I think CHC was in line to receive the real estate in the county. Then there was a couple other entities, Legacy Health, KRI. But suffice to say, there's been a lot of changes in the way healthcare is delivered here in our community. And we're optimistic that Freeman's coming in and, and they're, you know, looking at building healthcare that works for our community, for which I'm very thankful for. But through this whole process, trying to figure out healthcare providers that would coexist and not compete, regardless whether it's CHC Ascension Via Christie, or even Freeman. The leading ideas even today are still the ideas that were developed back when we learned that Mercy was closing. And that was, behavioral health was a discipline that there were great needs. And they, and not many organizations were capable to do what they call integrated care model. And so throughout all of this transition, you know, there's been a lot of different healthcare systems. But the Southeast Kansas Mental Health Center has largely been the stabilizing force to get us to where we are at today. You know, I know there's a lot of questions. I've seen some information that's new information that I'm not seeing before today. I am, I've been a board member for Southeast Kansas Mental Health Center for eight years, maybe going on nine. So I've, I've been through a lot of these changes. And I certainly am looking for answers to, to some specific questions. But I wanted to introduce myself as a board member and, and I don't have the, I didn't bring a bunch of answers to questions. But I, but I do see, both Marty and I are pastors of our local churches and we do seek to find the truth. And you can have our commitment on that. You know, my, my youngest son worked for the health department, this health department week. Well, he worked for the health department. He was off semester between undergraduate and medical school. And he served the health department. He ran the vaccination clinics for the local multi-county public health department. You know, my family, my wife is a physician. She retired when we moved to Kansas. When we first married, it was a shop not in like Dr. McKenna's office, his fee for service. But, but those, those things have all changed. And, you know, I, I would close my comments in saying, you know, now, now my daughter is finishing a residency in Wichita and that's where my youngest son is. He's going to be going in as she leaves. She was offered a position in a Southeast Kansas healthcare system that has county in their name. And she was offered a salary of $300,000 and it seemed like to me an awful lot of money. It's hard for me to process that kind of money. But rather than taking that salary, she's elected to do a fellowship in Peoria, Illinois, to where she could have greater exposure to high-risk pregnancies. Because ultimately she wants to come back to, if not this community, a community like this and serve people in Southeast Kansas. And I would say my son is, is similar predisposed. So I would encourage us to take time to get some facts and, and understand that the Southeast Kansas Mental Health Center has been advocating sort of a regional oslootomy, if you will, crisis center here in Fort Scott that would support our nurses program, that would support our area needs. And really provide a little more stability to the healthcare community than we've experienced those last eight or nine years. So I'd be happy to give you my telephone number. I do work, regular job, eight to five. But my telephone number is six two zero two two three six six three three. And my email address is Jeff, the letter N, Gloria at ckt.net. And so that might be an efficient way of getting questions to me. And I'd be happy to come back next week with maybe answers to specific questions. And to be a little more prepared to provide accurate truthful information. Did you have something, Marty?
I've been a part of Southeast Kansas Mental Health since about oh three. Started out as case manager. Was in the crisis team. All while pastoring Union Town Baptist Church. They asked me to do a crazy thing, serve on the board. And so for the last 10 years I've been doing that. We have seen this sheet that got passed around. Shows what has happened over the last few years. The one thing I want to point out, one of my primary emphasis was on kids. I worked with kids that were in need of mental health, health. I worked in schools. I worked in many homes. One of the things that Southeast Kansas Mental Health has done, and they've done it kind of quietly, is they put therapists and case managers in, I believe, 15 different schools. They did that at a risk. I remember when they sat down with the board and they talked to us about the possibility of doing that. And we had a principal and a counselor from a school that was doing it come in and talk to us about it. And she said, we've done it. It works. So the board decided to follow suit. We now have, I believe, 15 schools that have that integrated. And as a case manager, I've seen it work. As a pastor, I've seen it work. We have been able to reach people that we weren't reaching before. Because parents can sign and say, yes, you can. And the kids can be taken by a teacher into the therapist or into the case manager and get the help they need and maybe they would not have gotten before. So I think the process is working. Like Jeff said, I'm Marty Duitt, and if you want to call me, my number is six two oh two two four seven four three eight. I'd be glad to talk to anybody and answer any questions you might have. That's.
So is the county supposed to have a member on your board or is?
I was appointed when I was a county commissioner because there was a vacancy at that time.
Okay, so there's no vacancies on the board right now. The board is full.
Good point. And you're appointed by Southeast Kansas Mental Health or by Bourbon County Commissioner?
I was appointed by Bourbon County. I think it's been 10 years, something like that. I am the, one of the Southeast Kansas Bourbon County representatives as is Jeff.
We were talking earlier when we tabled our discussion on this tonight is that Allen County, one of Allen County Commissioners, they're setting up a meeting of county commissioners to discuss some of the issues that are relating to Southeast Kansas Mental Health. And so I think we're really just going to, you know, we're kind of at a pause right now to wait and see what comes out of that meeting and then where we're going to move forward with this.
Well, as you have, as you have questions, please give us the courtesy of helping you find truthful answers to those questions.
Will do. Right. I appreciate this work or this information. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else? Okay. So there's a work session immediately following the meeting to discuss 2025 roads and equipment plan for public works. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. And we can take a five minute, five minute break. So something like that.
Thank you.
Watch the meetings.
Did you watch it?
I have two questions on that. One is the source of their funding? And the second question I have is.
I wrote that.
The CFO and CEO have been paid a million dollars. I wrote six hundred dollars. I wrote that same question.
But the six, did you know about the six hundred?
Oh yeah, that's why we're having that.
That's why we was going to talk.
Do you have that?
I don't think anybody signed it. I will get him to sign. Kind of rude to sign him, why? We're in a meeting.
Make sure they get that hacker on that nurse.
You know, which is basically. Yeah, we're good. Have a good night, guys. What are the plans?
Think about it all the time. Ain't got no money to switch. North End. And we put together a horse day.
It doesn't hurt to get a little shit.
Because we can take them to the sales tax money.
He's gone over for trading.
And there's no hurry, but even it'll help you guys. But I don't even have money that you don't have to ask us.
Several hundred thousand this year.
Let's make that a note. Maybe, maybe, maybe your sheriff's deputy's need to learn how to drive. I'm glad everybody was okay. We voted to pass it, didn't we?
Yeah, that's what I was, we had a copy.
Okay, do I, or do I need to sign it?
I'm just on the top line. And then I'll have, yeah. And I'll have David sign as well. I have a whole stack of stuff for you guys to sign.
Let's get that to David as soon as we can.
Ouch. I'll save it for you.
Yeah, it's good. Straff got called in the chair.
Can I get the proof of publication? Thank you. I have to keep those forever, it seems like.
I gotta keep all my FFL background checks forever.
I know. That's the thing. I mean, there's so many documents we have to keep permanently.
Unless I go out of business, unless I give them back my license and then I can turn them on into them. And they got a warehouse about the size of six city blocks, just full of background checks. Matter of fact, the third floor caved in about nine years ago. All of the files come crashing down below.
Oh my goodness.
And I told that guy, and the FFL guy told me that, that ATF agent told me that. I was like, shouldn't even be keeping background checks. It gives my constitutional rights.
Not yet, not till, I'll hand them to you when I'm ready. How's that sound? That work? You got your mouse?
I got it right here. You want this video first or do you want the?
No, we'll do, we'll do that first, just to kind of give it, so everybody understands the process.
Okay. It's ready whenever you want. I'm waiting on the counterpart.
Well, that guy don't work on TV, do you mean that? What did you just do?
You want to watch this video on the leave?
Did you know that this won't work on the TV? Something that ain't gonna happen now.
Every power plant that went through could have used it.
Get there, brother.
Have you ever read those?
These?
Yes, that has really good information in it that shows like a lot of financial information for every county in Kansas. So pretty good to be able to look and see where we can pair with our neighbors and other counties.
Lynn County hired an operator. They didn't even have a CDL for two, almost 18 bucks an hour. Seventeen something? That's their minimum? Evidently. Because they didn't have a CDL and they hired you at that. Of course, he may, he may be a hell of an operator too. I don't know. It's rare for operators to not have a CDL.
Some of them don't though.
Few of them don't. We got a young kid that don't have one that's becoming a pretty good operator. We'll try to get him a CDL, of course. Right. Right.
Coming to get me. Figured out where I was at, finally.
Well, if it's the city cops, you just go outside the city limits, you're good.
I don't think they'd be able to catch me if I went on the road. I might know him a little too well. Something about one guy, I keep up with him driving. He scared them a little bit. The inspectors were bridges, they jumped in like, they're following, they're on the bridge. He was moving. Just a minute. He was fine.
Hey, uh, was we supposed to sign this tonight on this donation agreement?
I signed it.
You did? So this is just like my copy?
Yeah, that's just your copy. I have, I'll have you sign this one here.
I have another group.
Give another one?
Another group wants to.
Yeah, we're out of business, we can't.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking for a vote, I'm just saying that there are another group interested.
Okay. We're talking about roads now. Whenever you gentlemen are ready.
Are you ready? Okay. Ready? Okay. We're gonna start out, we put together a little video, kinda shows you the whole process that we go through from, um, doing our blast to running it through crusher, to making the asphalt, to laying asphalt, to chip and seal, which is kind of a preventative maintenance, our procedure. But just kind of wanna lay all that out there, um, so everyone just kind of understands the process and procedures that we go through. And then we've got information here for you, and our thoughts and plans, and then. Ready? Yep. So here's where they're putting the dynamite in, getting ready to do the blast, one of our queries. Here's another blast. Shows you the rock we get after. There's our loader, putting it in the crusher. It's going up the conveyor into our screen plant, and I'll show you that here in a minute.
This is the crushed stuff?
Yeah, this is, and this is our old crusher. This isn't our crusher we have right now. But it gives you the... And there it's going into the screen. Screening out the different sizes of rock. And there's your different piles from your road rock to your half inch to your quarter inch. Now we're at the asphalt plant. Those are our three bins that we put our sand, our quarter inch chips and half inch chips in. Different calculations on how much of each material. There it is going up the conveyor. There you can kind of see a flame up there at the top, it's going into the burner there, getting oil added to it. It's going up the stack. Hopper there, there we're spraying down the back of the trucks so the asphalt won't stick. There we're dumping out, and out we go. There we're spraying tack oil down. And here's your asphalt going down. And what I wanna bring to your attention is that asphalt. Any pause for just a sec, just so everybody, that asphalt right there is right at three hundred to three hundred and twenty degrees. So, just so everyone knows, on a hundred-degree day, you had, not only have the air temperature, you have, um, the asphalt, the heat coming off of the asphalt as well.
Plus, does our paper have a heater in it to keep it?
Yes. Yeah. So right in the screed or the back of the asphalt, you are right there with the with the heat.
So the, the aerial shot at the beginning of, of the road there, was that our crew?
Uh, no, that is a different crew. We don't have a video of our crew laying
Yeah.
laying them down yet. We will have, we just found one online so we could put it together so you guys could see what was going on. Have a chip and seal, we are.
We thought we had one.
I was gonna say, damn, we got some good equipment.
Now, this is, this is us here. And there we're getting the oil in our distributor truck, getting ready to spray it down.
This is a chip and seal process now. It's almost the same. Oil is a lot thicker.
They're pulling the truck backwards and down the road we go. Chips going down.
Not quite as hot, huh?
No, it's about a hundred and thirty, somewhere there.
Somewhere a hundred and thirty, a hundred fifty.
Just off that oil?
Yeah.
Still hot.
Yeah, the hotter it is, the, the longer we got as a flash point, so we wanted to stay fairly warm until we get the chips on.
Right.
So that just kind of gives you the just of what what we have going on. So, now that we have that, I'll go ahead and we'll hand these out. Here's the So what we try and do every year is after the winter, the freeze, the thaw, and the drought we have the summer before, we try and go around and drive our roads so we can rate them, to see what shape they're in, whether they've failed severely, whether they have a bunch of cracking, whether they have a bunch of rutting, um, just the condition of the roads. So, on this sheet I handed out, if you'll notice over there, the third column over from the far right, it says rating up there at the top. We've actually went through and, and rated the roads based off of the Pacer Asphalt Roads Manual. It's what a lot of the, um, entities are using to rate the roads. And then, we highlighted in red on the different pages the roads that are anywhere from zero to three. White is four, five, and six, and then the green is seven, eight, and nine. The higher the number, the better, the better the road. So, this here just kind of gives you the roads that we have. It also states in here what your different sections have been asphalted, chipped and sealed. So, just a little bit of information for you on that. The next one I have here for you, and I've got a lot of information tonight, but I wanna get everybody on the same page. This here will be the asphalt that was produced in tons. Yeah, I got it. Make sure my mic gets one back there. So, as you can see last year, and it gives you the date that we laid and the location that we laid the asphalt. Last year we we laid nine thousand three hundred and thirty-six tons. We were down a little bit last year, but our sales tax numbers was, was down as well, and we also had the flood going on, um, that we had to deal with, and we didn't get as early a start as we liked to, to get. Um, we didn't start last year till July twenty-sixth. But if you look at the years before, in twenty-three, we laid fourteen thousand three hundred and two tons. And twenty-one, we laid eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-four. No, that's twenty-two, I'm sorry. Twenty-two we laid. And then in twenty-one, at good sales tax numbers, we laid twenty-three thousand six hundred tons. So, that just kind of shows you the tons that, that have been laid. So, go from that. I did go ahead and print off sales tax numbers that we've had from twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. So that just kind of gives you the numbers that we that we've worked with. Remember, we transfer some back into Road and Bridge to help pay for the fuel expenses and labor and maintenance and those items, so. So now we get down to the to the, what plan, what our thoughts for this year. You have the final, final say in this, but this here is kind of what we were thinking based off of what our, uh, analysis is of the roads. Nope, I got one right here. So if we go down through and start in District, District One. Out on Hackberry or, um, on a hundred and twentieth. From Hackberry to Kansas, we have major road failure there. Clear down to where the subbase is pumping up. Um, we've battled it, and battled it, and battled it. It's to the point now that it needs to be milled up, taken back to gravel, reworked subbase, and then look at asphalt in the next few years. This is a estimated cost over to the far right. So the first two there are milling to gravel. Then we have Yale Road asphalt from, we called it Mapleton, what is that, thirty-one that goes out of, to Ninety-Fifth this year, getting a, a good base coat down on on the gravel, or down on the road. And then we, in District One, we would like to do a seal coat, which, um, be what we call chip and seal is what we're thinking. Um, we have some other options as well, but our bang for the buck, our best bang for the buck, we feel after we ran numbers, would be a chip and seal. And we would do everything that we've asphalted in twenty-one, so we'd do a preventative maintenance on that.
That's the remainder of District One?
Yes. That's all, if you see there in the center, it says seal coat, so we're chip and sealing. That would be our recommendation there.
And these were all asphalted in twenty twenty-one?
Yes. District Two. We have been contacted by Vernon County, and, and I don't remember the township or how that's all broke, they're broke down a little bit different than we are. On State Line Road, we own half the road, they own half the road. They are willing, or they were willing, we need to retouch base if you are willing on this, to, uh, pay for the asphalt if we would lay it. And we both own half of the road. So we put those numbers in there. Eagle Road, from Garland to State Line, we need to put the two-inch seal coat on. We didn't get to it last year. Ran out of funding. It needs to have the surface coat put, put on it, and then the rest is chip and seal that we laid in twenty-one.
Which one was that?
It's District Two Eagle. You said Garland to State Line?
Yes. So it'd be from the railroad tracks in Garland.
You're just putting the, the actual ceiling surface on top of it?
Yes, yes.
Tighter surface.
Yeah, the tighter.
It has a base on it. We need to go back and put the surface on it.
Tore up over the winter, didn't it?
Not too bad. It got a little, but not too bad. And then the rest there on those are chip and seal. Trying to do preventative maintenance to help our asphalt.
Now, these two in District Three, on Soldier and two hundred fifteenth, is that the same thing? You just need to go back and put the ceiling coat, the ceiling layer on top of it for the most part, or do we?
On two fifteenth from Xavier to Yale, that is from the flood we had last year that took out from the railroad track to the bridge. We need to go back, and we milled it up last year cause it looked like a zebra through there when the water went over and it took the different areas out. But we do need to go back and lay that. And then the one on Soldier from two fifteenth to two twenty-fifth, it did not get finished in twenty-three. And it needs to be it needs to be.
We feel if we don't overlay it in the near, near future, we'll lose it, so that's the reason we're still have it on there.
Of course, I guess all this actually depends on whether or not sales tax is up.
Sales tax. So that's.
Know what the projections?
I, I don't, don't have the projection. I can tell you right now, we're sitting somewhere around three hundred and sixty. Sitting in, in that fund. That's what our estimate, we think it is. And then each month, we'll get a dispersment, and we don't have our March numbers yet, but we should be getting them any day. So, then this last sheet is this exact same sheet you have with extra asphalt and chip and seal roads that we that could be done if you so choose, but if you wanted to substitute, geez, got it, got it, there we go. So the first District One, Two, and Three is the same as the page you already have. Once you flip back past that, that's just extra roads that we've laid out, extra chip and seal roads, and then extra asphalt roads that could, that need attention. And if you flip to the very last page, if you can find an extra three million two hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars, we could do everything in this package, so.
So you only need, so, so you only need three point? So.
No, the.
So for three point three, I could have all the roads done?
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that. All the roads on this list.
On that list. That's not all the roads. That's just the roads on those lists that we've identified that need to be.
That is the, them are the roads that are in green and red on that first sheet, for the most part.
So it'll take three point three mil.
It says asphalt extra, just one.
Those are extra.
Those are extra roads that they would do if they have the funds at the time.
Yeah, just the extras alone, so.
Okay, so when do you need to have a
Here, here's what we would like, is to, the sooner the better for us. As you can tell, they're asphalting right now on sixty-nine highway. Um, but we know you need time to look through it and visit with everyone, so if, if we could get started in May, would be outstanding for us. Would be outstanding for us. So we would like to try and lay asphalt, May-June. Um, do the smaller, if we go with the what we have proposed, our proposal, we would do the smaller areas. In May-June, let our sales tax build, do our chip and seal in July-August, then go up and spend the remainder of our. Sales tax funds on Yale and go as far as we can go.
So. Do you have like a a planned map of like where you're gonna start and make your circle around to get?
We would start in Garland on based off of this proposal here.
Okay.
We would start in Garland, we would go to Soldier. Do Soldier, then we would go to fifteen. And do that from the railroad tracks to the bridge. That would be our start of our asphalt.
And then chip and seal.
Then chip and seal.
And then and then do the chip and seal and then come and finish it all up at Yale at the end of the summer.
Before we can do Yale, we're gonna have to take some time, and we're gonna have to work the subbase and haul the gravel in and and water it down and roll it and get. Very good compaction and get our slope and.
Yeah, it'll take most of summer to get it ready just for the asphalt, all your asphalt and everything else.
Get it prepped, so. But that will also allow us to. Our sales tax to build as well, so. We can only do what sales tax money we have.
Right.
And that gets to be a shell game every now and then, trying to.
Yeah, I understand.
Especially late in the year.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming the money you have left over is what was coming in after asphalt season was over.
That's a guesstimate, so. If we think we're gonna get a hundred thousand each month, we try to spend that. And then if it comes in at a hundred and twenty, that's gonna be a little bit of a cushion for carryover.
Right. It might cover those cover those months when you don't quite get as much.
We don't want it to go the other way. If it comes in at ninety, then we're in trouble.
Right.
But one area that, and and I keep saying this, but we got to start doing is doing better with is our preventative maintenance and preserving what we've already.
And that's.
That's the.
Listed on here a couple.
Right.
Right, for chip and seal.
We we have a price for the Onyx that we done on two hundred and thirtieth. Um, and we can show you that if you want to see what Onyx looks like. But after we run the numbers, it's what do we come up with? It was right at two thousand three hundred and twenty-three point two-six per mile higher. So when you take fourteen miles, you're you're looking at thirty-two thousand higher.
That's not a good alternative.
That's not for what we can do with the chip and seal, so.
Well, but also, I mean, how often do you need to actually redo the Onyx?
Uh, it's every three to or every five years?
Five to seven years.
Five to seven years.
The same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing with the chip and seal, yeah. So it's not worth the extra money, it's not gonna last any longer.
And we have the equipment to do our. Um, chip and seal, or we believe we have the equipment, the. Chip spreader and our distributor truck is getting calibrated right now, so um, we have the two rollers. So I just. I would love to go with Onyx, but.
Yeah, that's too much of a price difference to, I mean, if it was, you know, seventy-five or a hundred bucks, I might think about it, but.
Yeah.
Case you didn't write down, this is the location that Mary talked about today?
Yep.
So we can get cost analysis on.
We can.
But I would imagine.
Is that?
I haven't looked at it, but I I would say based on the condition, you're probably gonna have to mill it as well and then.
Is that in the city limits?
Is that the one between the schools, Mary? That's the section that's between.
It runs between Frey Highway and the schools. And according to KSA sixty-eight five oh six F, it is the county's responsibility as a. Major feeder link road.
What was that statute?
Sixty-eight five oh six F.
Sixty-eight five oh six F.
We'll 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 have our.
Exactly. That's and that's what.
Just to just to make sure.
I I think, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this has been a battle for many years, that little section of road. Is that a fair statement?
Yep, I'm agreeing.
Okay.
But I I mean, you know, and if it has, I mean, this is, you know, this is an opportunity for us to look at it.
Absolutely, one hundred percent. And we'll definitely go get a price and look at it and.
See what needs to be done.
It's.
Just so we have an idea. Because it's it is a bus route, and I think that's more, that's kind of.
It's more than just a bus route. It's practically every bus.
Yeah.
Travels that section of road.
Right.
At least twice a day, most of the.
Do you know, is there wiring across the road for the school crossing, or do you know on that? Did they bury some wires right under the asphalt for that? I see it shaking back there. You think, okay, I just, if we had to mill it up.
I can't say that for sure, but they have the.
I wasn't for sure on that. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That section right in the front of the school is actually not terrible.
I mean, I.
I mean, it's not, I mean, go bring it back.
Okay, get ahold of Union Town School, the elementary school. They got that gravel road that runs there on the east. Side and circles around past their ballpark. She actually got ahold of me earlier, I think, and I kept forgetting to say something. They would like that dust control. So get ahold of them and see.
The school itself?
Yeah, it's the road that runs right around this, around around their ball fields. They need it, especially when it's dry outside and during school, especially in the morning and in the afternoons. It's kicking up a lot of dust, so. But it's the one that runs by the elementary school and down around their baseball field.
Are you looking at doing it? Are you looking at charging them for doing it, or what what is your? Or just get you?
Well, we can't really make that decision. I just call them and let them know and have them give you the location and then.
Get the paperwork going on.
Paperwork going on, and then we can make that decision at a later date.
Yep.
Same same thing, find out what what what.
No problem.
Tell them what 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 cost, you know, uh, in case, you know, that way we can talk with them and make our.
Yep. Yep, one hundred percent.
What do you think?
I think. Anything else from the crowd?
Just one thing on that lights in front of you, you tell me it's talking about. Brock Electra.
Okay.
So that way you have a.
Yeah, yeah, called Brock Electra. You can see if they ran it across the road or if they ran it power from each. They may ran power from each one of the buildings.
I have a question. Um, on on District One, you're changing two of them from milling to gravel. What what's on there right now?
Which one?
It's asphalt right now. We're we gotta mill it down and redo the base.
And then not put it back to asphalt for four years?
We would like to put it back to asphalt as soon as possible.
Next year with your plan, totally bring it back to you.
Is there?
Well, I imagine that's where the amount of your complaints are gonna come from.
Is there a reason why you have to wait? Once you mill one?
Just to just to expense.
The expense and and.
Where I didn't know if there was a reason.
The winter and the freeze, once you get the base material on there, the the cold and the warm, it helps everything kind of settle out a little bit. So it helps.
Compaction.
Compaction over. Over a year's time, so I think there's a benefit to leaving it open for at least a year.
How long does that stay? Is that just one mile?
Yes.
Hackberry to Camden?
Yes.
I know, we will have to be prepared.
Yeah, so long as it can be explained.
That is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you right now, it doesn't matter how much explaining you do. Because they milled it, because they, because they, because they milled. Because they milled up Yale.
It may be more efficient than Yale was.
I believe there's a new, I don't know what the proper term is, convent or something's been built out in in that little section.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, that's where the nuns are living. Yeah, that's why the, that's why the road names look familiar.
Residents in the area that you're gonna do work with.
We will when we get ready to.
I mean, just let them know that.
Yes.
And there's equipment and stuff like that going around.
Yep, one hundred percent. Would do that.
Post it on Facebook as well.
We've.
Let everybody know.
Tried to piece that together, and it just hasn't worked out.
Yeah, you guys, you guys have really worked hard to try and keep that road together, but it's terrible, and I'm gonna sad to see be sad to see it go, but it's, you gotta do something different.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if need be, we can lower the speed limit for that mile. Going to gravel.
Right.
Not that it matters. I lowered it to, I lowered it to thirty-five on Yale all the way to the county line. I think I'm the only one that drives thirty on it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just talked to to the sheriff's department, because they do pretty good about, yeah, if you give them an area, target area.
They do.
We did that on that bridge, and I think they did a good job.
They did. KHP done a good job and. So, um, also, just to give you a heads up, City of Fort Scott may be reaching out to you on producing asphalt. As well, so I'm just giving you.
That was part of our joint talk.
Yeah.
We're still working.
Yeah, so.
If they can, uh, how's that work? Because we can't, we technically can't make a profit off of it, right? Because then we're, because then we're competing with the.
They'll have to be an intermobil agreement.
I just.
But.
You know, I think I think. Um, you know, they're just wanting us to produce it, and then they're gonna lay it, or?
I I have no idea what they're what they're wanting, but. Here's.
Because I don't think they're outfitted yet.
Here's a concern. Are they gonna buy the material, the rock, and because we're gonna need what material we have if we're gonna do this plan here? So if they wanna buy the material, we'll be more than glad to.
I mean, that's.
Produce it for them. But.
I say any, I mean, and and I'm I'm wanting to, you know, start working on, we're we're in our first quarter here, so. It's time for us to sponsor another session.
Right.
Work on on having that date, have that discussion with the city then, so.
Right. I I know Brad has reached out to me, but I told, I said, Brad, you you're gonna have to go for a commission and and. And have that discussion, so. Think they're looking for a price, and they're probably wanting to plan as well, so.
I understand. Everybody wants to.
Absolutely. Yep. So.
It's that time of the year. Take advantage of it on the weather.
But if if we could get an answer in the next.
I'll.
So.
By May or what have you, that would help us.
Say.
I'd say have have this information ready the first meeting in May.
Okay.
And we can probably give you an answer. I mean, I I can probably give you an answer then anyways. I don't know.
And I will try and get you the numbers on the other. Other one and get it to you, so that way you can process that as well, meaning Union Town.
You got all the paperwork? I would say that. You know, first we can, first meeting to May, I would say we want, if they want to start in May, maybe we ought to do it.
Well, I'd say the first, what is the first meeting in May? The first Monday in May is. What's the date on that? And if we're in the first three or four or five days of May, then we can give them the go-ahead to start their plan. They should have plenty of time. Fifth? Is that soon enough for you guys to get started?
And it all depends on the weather, but the weather should be straightened up. I would hope.
Okay.
The sixtieth and Grand Bridge job. How's that? Is that gonna? Be messing with the asphalt and the dump trucking for the road?
We'll have nothing to do with that. That'll be all contractor.
Okay.
We are done with our part of that. Yep, we done everything. We have completed everything that we needed to do before, and it goes to bid the sixteenth.
And and so you said you guys.
Yeah, but there's no guarantee that they're gonna have a start date from after contracts are in place. Until March of twenty-sixth. And the reason they're doing that is contractors are so full, they're giving them the length to be able to start the project due to the fact. That it doesn't drive the price up. So that we're short contractors in the state. So that's just where it's at.
So again, uh, on this plan.
Yes.
Plan on starting Eagle?
Eagle down there.
On work from Garland to the State Line and then staying in that area?
We'll just, we would do that, and then we would pull up Soldier.
I mean, that's that's.
To do from basically from the railroad tracks at Hammond.
District Three Soldier.
To two fifteenth.
To twenty-fifth.
And then we would move right up the road to.
To two fifteenth to Yale?
Yep.
And then we would do all our seal coat.
Then you'll do all the chip and seal.
Well, what about, uh, Ninety-Fifth to Hundred and Fifteenth?
That's where we're gonna end.
Also, you'll do that after.
Yeah, that's they'll they'll actually asphalt that section from the highway at Mapleton to Hundred and Fifteenth Street. Or as far as they could go.
I guess I should.
The the asphalt equipment on the chip and seal, you know, you use the oil, right? Use the distributor and then the rollers, or should not.
Rubber tires.
Uh, using the the asphalt plant as far, not for that difference.
Do you, would you like for me to reach out to Vernon County on that partial to?
Yes.
Make sure that.
Find out what the cost, you know, what the cost is gonna be.
Well, they're gonna pay for it.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna pay, I mean, but I.
To make sure that they're still, so if we do that, then we would go from Garland. The State Line, or we might start at the State Line and go to Garland then to add just.
But you're gonna stay in that area.
I guess that State Line deal would be based on their timeline for that, but. But I would say if they're gonna pay for the material, there ain't no reason for us to not pay it.
To delay it.
It's gonna cost us fuel and labor.
A little bit of labor, but. And there is a, a lot of people that use that word. They went over there to measure it the other day.
Also, guys, if there's, uh, any questions on that, call us and ask.
Yes.
We will explain everything we can.
Or we'll sit down with you, whatever works for you.
I know there's a lot of information that.
No, I'll look through it and I'll. I think we're good. I can understand the plan, because we're gonna start. Yeah, get ahold of Vernon County or whatever the township is, get some numbers from them, see what their timeline is, and then bring it back to us and then we'll make the decision then.
Wanna do that, so.
We can add that to to.
Right.
Because you use the same crew for asphalt and for chip and seal, right? It's the same bunch of guys that run the equipment?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes.
These numbers, you know, he got them today, that's labor, the whole.
What's that?
The numbers on the cost of.
Cost of material on on that, yes, material cost.
Or labor's figured into a different budget line, so when we figure the budget line on that, we'll figure it, just materials.
Yes.
Kind of run through during asphalt season, you have to go to different hours.
We we go to a, get your forty hours in, whatever that means, from Sunday to Saturday, so it may be. Monday, you may only have come in and worked Sunday before, just because it was a high-volume road, but you you may work. Have all your time in by Thursday at noon, and then you're off Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and come back Monday. So during that time, we go whatever it takes to get the forty hours in. Try and keep the overtime down to a minimum, if any at all. And it works out well for the guys, especially being out in the hundred-degree heat and dealing with that and.
Always is.
So.
You allow them to start earlier in the morning?
Yeah, we start about, we still kind of go at seven.
We still try to stay in the daylight, just safe.
Yeah.
Daylight, you get out there and darken it.
Right.
Just dangerous. It drives in for coolness, but it just, it's not very safe.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, I think I'm good. I'll look over the plan.
I mean, I I I wanna see it as a whole, like the big picture and all together, you know? I I I kind of understand what you have going on here, but I was jumping in from.
Sure.
From the side, and so I really, for me to understand, I need to see it together in comparison to a couple of years, you know? I see that you got a year or so comparison on here, but like your whole budget and, does that make sense? Just the whole thing, because you're in charge of all of it, and just like to see it all together, and then I can break it apart.
So on asphalt or the the whole budget?
All.
Well, the, yeah, I think we got a copy.
Yeah.
You will find, you will get a budget book and show you everything.
I mean, we're not not just, not all, everybody.
It's in that twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
But if anything, we can answer questions.
Yes.
Be more than I sit down with you.
You want me to draw it out on a map and highlight green and red? I can do that for you, whatever you.
We have got really good highlights.
G I S and show me on on that.
Yeah, yep, yep.
I'd be more happy to work with you.
Yep. Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you. Good, appreciate it. As far as I know, we was talking about roads. I think I'm done.